Good morning, everybody.
Oh, my gosh.
And welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for this Tuesday, June 13th. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board. On my left, fellow Commissioner Deb Shore. On my right, Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office is Mr. Dave Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the Clerk, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. And from the County Board Office, we have both the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, as well as the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all of the material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda nine and one are minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, June 6th. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Department Budget Hearings held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Department Budget Hearings held last Tuesday. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through June 13, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the claims processed through June 13th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a public hearing. This is for County Tax Amendment Number 17009 to amend Articles 4, 5, and 13 of the Lancaster County zoning resolution.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. First, I'd like to have the members of the Planning Department staff come up and give a presentation.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. This is an application for an amendment to the county zoning text to replace several or move several items from permitted uses or conditional permitted uses and make them by special permit only. Some of the uses include dog breeding establishments and kennels, churches, places of religious assembly, group homes, domestic shelters, et cetera. Showing on this chart shows the ones that are to be removed. The date next to the use shows when those were put into the county zoning ordinance. Some of them have been in since 1968. Most of them have been in the code since 79. To our knowledge, there has not been any complaints or issues with these uses. Some of the newer ones, such as family airfields, there was actually a task force done at the time to look at all airstrips in the county. And based on the task force recommendation, this was approved by the County Board at that time to put in as a conditional use. For churches and cemeteries, like I said, those have been in since 68. And without going into a lot of detail, churches and cemeteries are protected under the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, also known as ARLUPA. So Planning Department is recommending denial to this application.
Any questions for Mr. Chaka? Commissioner Shore?
The amendment or the act that you mentioned regarding protection of places of religious worship, is that a federal act or a state act?
It's a federal act.
Are there any other questions for Planning Staff? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here to testify in support of this amendment? Please come forward. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Mike Williams. I live at 7820 North 112th. Referring to the ARLUPA, yup, it's a federal statute. Nobody's saying that they can't build. We're saying we want people to have a voice. That law, last month, the City Planning Commission allowed Marzilims to be put in special permits, but they, but they're saying that law don't apply to Marzilims, which is a cemetery, but yet, but somehow now, somehow applies to this instance, but it don't apply to Marzilims. So I don't understand how you can take a federal law and apply it to one cemetery, Marzilim, and not apply it to the same one. Again, they approved putting Marzilims into special permits, but yet they denied having this cemetery moved into special permit. Again, this is not about trying to discriminate against somebody. It is about giving people a voice. You people are elected by the people for the people. And during, when I came up to support of this bill, when it was in front of the Planning Commission, in the report that they say dog breeding is an agricultural event, you tell me the last time you guys ate dog. Tell me the last time you guys seen a dog at a 4-H show. Those, that is not agriculture business. So that's, I don't understand how they can classify dog breeding as agriculture when it's clearly not. And everything I put in here is either can be considered a nuisance, a public safety, or a health concern. And again, we're asking for people to have a voice, to be able to say, especially when cemeteries have a right to, once they get full, pull intimate domain and take people's properties. People should be able to have a say over that kind of, if cemeteries have that kind of power, people should be able to have a say for what's going to go on in that community. Additionally, when we submitted that application, we was informed right before we submitted it that this will never get approved. We don't even, at that point, we don't even have a say. The Planning Commission already put a muzzle on me and said, no, you do not have a say. We're going to deny it without even hearing any kind of support. So they already, they already made a prejudgment. So I don't know how you can take their feedback, knowing that there's already bias into their input. Again, we are just trying to make sure that people have a voice and able to know what's going on in the community. Again, dog kennels can provide additional diseases and noises, airports, noise, contamination from all the fuels and chemicals that they can bring in. Public homes can have all sorts of, anywhere from, for group homes, you could have possibly disrupted people going out and destroying property within the community. Domestic violence, if, again, that could eventually be an opportunity for violence. And as you said, these statues or these, these things have been in the books since 1968 or 1979. Now we got urban sprawl. They need to be modified for this urban sprawl, this additional population that was not in these areas at the time that these were put in place. And again, we're looking for to have a voice in what's going on in our backyard, in our community.
Anything else? Mr. Williams, if you have any questions, Commissioner Avery?
I take it you're opposed to the text amendment?
No, I'm, I want the text amendment coming in.
Supportive of it.
Okay. I'm the one who submitted the application to get the modifications.
All right.
Well, the only thing I would point out is you make a reference to dog breeding. Dog breeding is actually licensed by the State Department of Agriculture. And use of canines is widely used in agriculture. Herding is one of the most common uses of animals, but they are regulated. That practice is regulated by the Department of Ag, among other things. And you make reference to the bias and the process. You made an application. You exercised your right to do that. It went before Planning. Planning did make a recommendation of denial. That recommendation was heard at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission took action. They forwarded it to the County Board for final action. Again, that's a process, which for the entire time, the Planning Department, I know for a fact that they communicated directly with you on a number of occasions regarding this issue. You bring up a lot of issues in your emails regarding groundwater contamination, a whole list of things that were thoroughly investigated, and that information was, you know, shared with you, that they were unfounded. And so with that, I mean, I understand, I understand that you have concerns about what's going in your backyard, but we've had this process in place allowing for this use in the county for more than 40 years.
You show me the studies, sir. You show me the studies that, I can show you case laws that cemeteries provide water and ground contamination. And then again, when I dropped off my application, I was told, why am I dropping off? I was told it would be denied. How is that, how is that a proper process, sir? You're telling me I'm going through the process? I'm just going through the motions at this point. I was already denied before I even had an opportunity.
No, no, that was not denied. That's the action that we're taking here today. That is the process. And I know for a fact that the staff at the Planning Department shared that with you. They shared with you that their recommendation to both the Planning Department and the County Board would be denial. That's our call, and they know that, and they're professionals. It's, this is not the first time that an issue like this has come up regarding a, you know, a text amendment that has been proposed by the public. It is up to the County Board to make the final decision on that. And so that's why, that's why we're here today.
I really hope you allow the people to have a say, especially, again, especially when one of them has that much power that they allow that, you know, domain to take property. People should at least be able to have a say in that type, with that type of power, what's going on in their backyard. And then, and as you read in the report that, that, and one of the Planning Commissioners said that we need to go get educated and get informed. I'm very educated. As you realize, I provided you the Board with five emails. All of them are based on my research on studying state laws, county codes, and getting information on the organization itself. And again, this is not about one organization. This is about trying to give the community and the neighborhood a voice in what's going on. And all the changes I'm proposing can be construed as either public safety, health, or nuisance.
Okay, I know you've been in contact with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality.
Yup.
And I know that they've shared information with you that your findings are not accurate.
No, they said it's possible. There's a possible contamination, especially the people to the north, to the east of that property, because the water flows from west to east. And they said they actually have to do a new study to actually see if, make sure that's true or not. So there is, and they said there is possibility of water contamination.
Well, anything, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to testify in support of this amendment? Anyone here to testify in opposition? Okay, anyone here to testify in the neutral capacity? Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing and move on to item four A, Mr. Clerk.
This is under new business, a resolution regarding County Tax Amendment Number 17009 to amend Articles 4, 5, and 13 of the Lancaster County zoning resolution as provided in Attachment A.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, I will decide that motion fails for a lack of second. Is there a motion to reject?
I will move, we deny the resolution changing the county tax amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to reject. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject the county tax amendment. Any discussion?
I might just note, even though a decision might go against your wishes, it doesn't mean that you haven't been heard in the process.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is for B. This is an agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and its Children's Justice Clinic at the University of Nebraska for the representation of indigent juveniles in the separate juvenile court of Lancaster County as specified in the agreement. The county will pay the clinic $1,778 per case for the services provided. Term of the agreement is June 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2020.
Okay. I see we have a member of the audience stepping forward to speak about this issue. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, my name is Michelle Paxton. I'll be serving as the Director of the Children's Justice Clinic.
If you'd like to share some information about this grant, that would be, that would be helpful.
Thank you. The Children's Justice Clinic will be launching officially this fall of 2017, where third-year law students will have an opportunity to serve as guardians at Lydham and Lancaster Juvenile Court, which means they will represent children who have been identified as abused or neglected and are entitled to legal representation. The clinic will allow students to receive specialized training from the Center on Children, Families, and the Law and the University of Nebraska College of Law, so that they will have the skills and knowledge necessary to continue to represent children in this capacity upon graduation. So this contract will facilitate a portion of the fees necessary to represent these children. Additional funds have been raised through private donations and other government agencies to allow the Children's Justice Clinic to financially survive.
Any questions for Ms. Paxton? Commissioner Shore?
I will just note that this contract's very timely. While this focuses on juvenile court specifically, I know one of the goals is to get law students interested in being a guardian at Lydham. And we heard during our county court budget hearing, the difficulties they are having locating guardians at Lydham and those willing to serve in that capacity. So this is excellent timing.
Thank you. In fact, Commissioner Shore, it's not only being able to identify those interested, it's finding those highly qualified. And it is our hope through the Children's Justice Clinic, we can set forth a high standard of highly qualified attorneys that can work in this capacity. So thank you for hearing us and entering into a contract for services.
And thank you, Ms. Paxton. As Commissioner Shore mentioned, I think this is a vital tool for the county, for the state, to handle a difficult population, those children that are involved in the court process. So we very much appreciate the university stepping forward and helping out with this project.
You so much.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Nebraska Department, I'm sorry, the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of University of Nebraska-Lincoln and its Children's Justice Clinic. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four C has been removed from the agenda. D is adoption of the revised Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Fund Grant Guidelines effective June 13, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Mall.
Good morning, Commissioners. Beautiful Tuesday in the capital city. I wanted to take a quick opportunity. Last weekend was an amazing weekend for our community. There was four signature events that I am so proud of our sales team and what our Bureau's done for the community, that I want to take this opportunity to recognize four great events and the impact that they had on our community. The Strider Cup was an amazing event for kids on bikes without pedals, and this is an opportunity for kids to compete with elbow pads, knee pads, helmets, and they just took over downtown Lincoln, Union Plaza, or not, excuse me, Tower Square. An amazing event for our community. The USA Wrestling World Team Trials at Devaney Center. From every indication, this was the largest world team trials that USA Wrestling's ever experienced as far as audience participation. Ticket sales and overall, just having Jordan Burrows do what he did, lose, he went down, he came back, it was an amazing moment. So that was fun. The Barrel Bash World Finals at the Lancaster Event Center. And then the nationally televised, taped for a later date, the PWBA Pepsi Open for Women's Professional Bowling was at Sun Valley Lane. So it was a good weekend. Roma and I had a chance to just talk about what an amazing time it was. So I appreciate all of your support. Without your support from the county side, we couldn't do the things that we do at the convention and Visitors Bureau, so thank you. We want to, for the item of business, talk about the Visitor Improvement Fund Grant Guidelines. And I want to get to a point today where we can get these approved and ask for adoption of. But I also want to point out that the guidelines that we will approve or ask to be moved on today should not affect what we will take a look at on Thursday in the way of a Lead Center application. The grant application that the Lead Center filled out are the previous grant guidelines. So I want to make sure that what we approve today does not affect their grant application on Thursday. So I don't know if there's any discussion on that or if we need to confirm that, but I think that's a pretty key point to remember.
Okay.
Okay. With that being said, the grant guidelines help the Visitors Promotion Committee in allocating visitor improvement fund dollars. We've done a great job as far as a VPC goes, as well as a County Board, on making sure that the grant application is clean. The changes that you see in front of you, I think you have a couple of different documents. One is with a bunch of yellow highlights, and those yellow highlights are the changes that we made. It cleans up the process. It makes sure that grant applicants understand limitations of the fund, as well as we take a look at these applications and what we call major grant applications and minor grant applications. Major is anything $10,001 and over. Minor is $10,000 or less. So with that being said, I know we've had some discussion on that. I would be happy to answer any questions as it pertains to the guidelines.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, I was wondering if it would make any, create any issues if we actually made the effective date of these guidelines to occur after we had the completion of discussion on the pending grant applications.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly acceptable, because I know we're looking at an effective date of June 13th.
I think that one was filed under the previous application.
Okay, okay. So it should...
Yeah, why don't we have someone from the County Attorney's Office? Mr. Durbin?
Yeah, we have discussed this, and typically when you would adopt legislation of any sort of, it would be retrospective. This isn't necessarily legislation, but unless the Board specifically asks for these to be retrospective, I would not expect them to apply to an application that's already been submitted.
So the date would stay as is on the document?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for Mr. Mall? Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion. Commissioner Amundson?
Well, I would move that we do approve the guidelines with the condition that, very specifically, that the Lead Center application be recognized as a grandfathered one.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the revised Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Fund Grant Guidelines effective June 13th, with the added emphasis on clarifying that the Lead Center's application will be subject to these, the pre-existing guidelines. Any discussion?
I will just comment.
Commissioner Shore?
I think that putting the dates in for the grant review cycle certainly will help us plan ahead, because we've kind of been more reactive in certain situations and proactive, and I think this is a great addition.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. I think it cleans up the process and keeps it within the boundaries of what we do four, four times a year.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thanks, Jim.
Four E is an agreement with Great Plains Appraisal, Inc. to provide referees to hear evaluation protests and transmit to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization all papers relating to such protests, together with written findings and recommendations. Great Plains Appraisal will provide the services of Wayne Cooper, Thomas Cooper, Cody Girdes, Lori Johnson, Jason Pickrell, Sean Fleck, Kathy Breilly, Joe Henley, Carlos Lopez, and Jay Seifert. The county will pay $70 to $95 per hour for referee services, $33 per hour for clerical support, and $35 per hour for security service.
Good morning, Mr. Cooper.
Good morning, Tom Cooper with Great Plains Appraisal, also referee coordinator for Lancaster County. This first item is the contract for Great Plains. This is a contract that we accept as a company, and we expect everyone in our company to be involved in. And so that's the long list of names there. We happen to be the largest firm in the state in appraisal services, and as part of their employment, we do involve them all summer long. And so that is why the list is long. This will go with the next item also in terms of contracting. But just to give you an idea, we're up to 28 referees available. I think we'll have two or three that will come in later meetings. Right now, the volume is not particularly high, but that's pretty standard for this early in the month. Most of the protests end up getting filed the last two weeks of the month, and so we do expect the numbers to pick up as we move through. We have also had a good relationship with Lancaster County Sheriff's Department in getting security services lined up, as well as working with the Clerk's Office and the Lancaster County Event Center, as well as the Assessor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Are there any questions for him?
Move approval.
Most of the protests end up getting filed the last two weeks of the month, and so we do expect the numbers to pick up as we move through. We have also had a good relationship with Lancaster County Sheriff's Department in getting security services lined up, as well as working with the clerk's office and the Lancaster County Event Center, as well as the assessor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Are there any questions for...
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Great Plains Appraisal to provide referees to hear valuation protests and transmit all papers relating to such protests. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four F are agreements with the following individuals to provide referee services to hear valuation protests for the 2017 tax year and to transmit information to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization. And this includes Robert Anderson, Barry Couch, Jeffrey Danick, Richard Danick, Brett Hollingsworth, Joel Kirby, Bill Lang, John Lehman, Daniel McKenzie, John McVeigh, Jan Moore, Mark Rosno, Larry Swanson, Marilyn Tabor, Joel Walker, and Sally Webster. Mr. Cooper, do you have anything?
Yeah, just as a short overview, we did solicit 82 appraisers, and this is the list that we came up with. And so we've gone out into the county. Lancaster County is getting competition from our surrounding counties for appraisers, and so we have appraisers in Lancaster County that are working in other counties now, particularly Sarpy and Douglas. They're being solicited, and so it's a competitive environment. We all know that the real estate market has been very fast-paced over the last six to eight months and beyond. And now, in terms of loans, we're seeing that banks are bidding for loans, not only on interest rate, but on the speed at which they can close. And so as we ask referees to put their primary business aside during the summer, to come out and be a referee instead of doing mortgage work, they're having to turn down work because they can't do both, because of the quick turn times. What used to be a three- to four-week turn time is now a 10-day turn time on the residential side, and so it's getting harder and harder to find people. There are regulations at the state level that are being approved right now that will require referees to be licensed appraisers, and so we're going to run into this shortage in the years to come also, as it's getting more competitive out there for the shortage of appraisers that we have in our state.
Any questions? Commissioner Shore?
Let me give you an opportunity to recruit here for a moment. What type of background do you need to be, to be an appraiser? I mean, if there's such a demand in this job market, how do you go about becoming one?
Well, there are certain classwork that you must take. There are certain exams to pass, and those can be done locally. The biggest challenge that you have is getting experience, becoming a trainee. It takes about three years of being a trainee just to get a credential. There are only certain firms that want to train people. Great Plains trains as many people as anybody in the state, and we have three right now. And so it's very difficult to find the experience factor. I get a phone call every week, people looking for experience, just trying to find people who are willing to do that.
Commissioner Avery, you have a question?
Yes, you, what was the number you said had, you had sent out the request to a number of appraisers, and these are the ones that responded?
Yes. These are the ones that were willing to contract with the county this year. We sent out 42 solicitations of previous referees unrelated to Great Plains Appraisal, and 40 new referees were solicited based on the log of appraisers maintained by the state of Nebraska. And of those, we were able to get 10.
And this will be sufficient for your needs?
Well, at this, at this point, we don't know the volume. Right now, there's around 800, last I checked, have been filed. We expect that number to get up towards between 3,500 and 4,000, but it'll depend on what those last two weeks find out, or in terms of filings. We really don't know until the Fourth of July or slightly after, and we have to be done two weeks later. And so we gear up with as many as possible. We get them to commit to their time. We have the dates lined up. We've given them the dates, trying to help them keep their schedule clear, and then we wait. And we wait and see what the volume is.
So the people that you have on your list here, they would be able to handle 3,000 or 4,000 protests?
Yes, I think we can handle, we can handle that volume with the people that we have.
I note that none of the recommended rates exceed $75. I made an issue of this, I think, last year. I have to point out that I'm more hap, I'm happier with this recommended rate than I was with those $95 ones.
Very well, they're committed, and they're consistent with other counties, those rates, those rates for services.
Do you have a motion?
I believe we do have a motion and a second.
We don't yet.
We don't yet.
I will move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreements with the following individuals to provide referee services to hear valuation protest. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Four G is an agreement with the State of Nebraska Department of Roads for the provision of transportation services for the Lancaster County Public Rural Transit Program. Term of agreement is July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Funding is from federal funding for public transportation operating assistance program and the State of Nebraska Department of Roads. The cost accounted shall be remain, shall be remaining eligible costs not paid by federal and state funds and shall not exceed $16,695.
Good morning. Mitch Thump with Lancaster County Public Rural Transit. I was here in March seeking your approval to seek funds from Nebraska Department of Roads, which you granted. We have since received the acceptance that we will receive funds from Nebraska Department of Roads. So today, we're just asking for the formal approval of the amount not to exceed $16,695 for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, are there any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the State of Nebraska Department of Roads for the provisions of transportation services for the Lancaster County Public Rural Transit Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Amundson?
I was just going to say that, you know, this particular service is such a valuable one to the people and the, to the elderly particularly, in the rural, in the rural communities. And so this is an excellent expense.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H is an amendment to kind of contract C-16-393 with Claus Hartman, MD, to provide psychiatric services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. The amendment extends this contract from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. It increases the rate of pay to $725 per 24-hour period of coverage.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Dr. Claus Hartman to provide psychiatric services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four I is a recommendation from the purchasing department and county engineer to award a contract to High Plains Enterprises, Inc., for scour repair at Bridge H20. The cost accounted is $71,507.50.
Pam Dingwall, Lancaster County Engineer. So we've had a number of discussions about Bridge H20 and Bridge H19, at which time I told you that I would seek to improve H120 first, so that we could move on to, to do the stabilization of H119. So this bridge is located on 176th Street, just actually north a little bit of the interstate. It, it is a used, used bridge that we purchased in 1932 at auction and originally installed in Emerald, and then later moved, moved to the Waverly area. You can see from the photo I have up on the overhead that this bridge has experienced significant scour behind the abutment. This bridge is one of those bridges, sadly, where we can check every box. It's scour critical, it's functionally obsolete, it's fracture critical, and it is structurally deficient. But we need to stabilize this so we can fix the southern bridge. Here's another picture of the, of the southern abutment of this bridge. So with that being said, I had originally estimated $200,000 and was really pretty excited to repair this bridge. Was really pretty excited this week when it came in at just a little over $71,000, so...
Any questions for the county engineer?
With that positive news, I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to High Plains Enterprise for scour repair on Bridge H120. I do have one question. Do you have a time estimate when construction or repairs will be started and be completed?
So right now, we are waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers permit for this. It has been submitted, and they have told me, given the nature of this bridge, that if, if the southern bridge, which is also very close to needing to be closed, was to have to be closed, we would landlock people. The Corps has told me that they would put it up higher in the pile of Lancaster County permits they currently have. So I would hope that we could start construction on this sometime in the fall. And then what we've done in these contracts is we've put a provision in that once you've started, you need to finish.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. J is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the county engineer to award a contract to High Plains Enterprises, Inc., for concrete box culverts F225, Geolat G111 and G144. The cost accounted is $501,267.55.
Pam Dingwall, Lancaster County Engineer. So this contract would, would, would demo Bridge F225, Bridge G144, and Bridge G111, and replace those three smaller bridges with box culverts. We know that that's about a third the cost of a bridge, and we also know right now that there, while there is a shortage of qualified bridge contractors, there is a surplus of formed concrete contractors. So this is a project that I had estimated at around $750,000. It came in at just a little over 501, so we're super excited to see that, too. You may recall that these are the bridges that had to be closed last year with those August storms that we, we received. And so what I want to say about them is, since that August storm, my staff, as well as Department of Roads, has worked very diligently to get these plans out and to bid. That included hydraulic studies, that included wetland studies, and you may not be aware that Nebraska Department of Roads designs the structures themselves for us. And so they worked, they worked really closely with us to turn these around very quickly. Just a quick picture of the current condition of F225, where you can see the undermined footing at the, at the bottom. And of course, this is what, what caused this bridge to be closed and is not repairable. A second picture of F225 showing, showing the additional scour underneath that bridge. G111, you may note, similar construction, that spread footing WPA construction, and this is underneath that footing, has been washed completely away. And G144 on Bluff Road between 27th and 40th Street, which since we've closed, has actually, the backside of this abutment actually kind of fell in. So we're excited at the opportunity to get these off the scour critical list for Lancaster County and replace them at what we feel is a very, is a very good price.
Any questions for the county engineer? Commissioner Amundson?
Just a comment. You're batting 1,000 so far. Those coming in last.
I don't know if we want to jinx it as we talk about the next one.
Okay, well, I would move approval.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question.
Commissioner Shore?
Same question, Todd asked last name, timing for these three projects.
So these are smaller box culverts than the ones that we're going to talk about next week. We are, and they're also on gravel roads. They all are all important to the neighbors that they, and the farmers who they serve. I believe we put in these contracts 40 days from start to completion. We're again waiting on permits for these. And, and something I haven't talked about with the board is, there is also a new environmental regulation out there that says from June 1 to July 31, cannot disturb a tree. There's a moratorium on it because of the long-eared brown bat. So, so for sure, construction will start after July 31.
Brown-eared bat, they do, that's a different timeframe than the nesting migratory birds.
So yes, yes, the long-eared brown bat is a different, is a different timeframe. And I know that Mr. Egan actually has a calendar on his door that lines out all the different nesting periods that, and, and not only for animals, but all the grow periods we have for plants that were required to, to meet.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Clerk?
Avery? Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four K is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the county engineer to award a contract, Constructors, Inc., for redecking of Bridge N138. The cost accounted is $424,089.13.
Pam Dingwall, Lancaster County Engineer. So Bridge N38 is on Denton Road, just outside of Denton. It actually is not within the corporate limits of the Village of Denton, but within their zoning jurisdiction. And so this is a bridge that has had a lot of deterioration with the deck of the bridge. You can see from the photo that I put up on the, on the overhead that we've, we've tried to patch it and stabilize it a number of times, and in fact, we even have some continued concrete spalling on this, this particular bridge, as well as, as well as some deterioration of the I-beams on the outside of the bridge. And so this is a redecking job, so what we're going to do is, we're going to take that deck off the bridge, and we're going to replace it with a new deck, because the good news about this bridge, so you've heard the bad news, the good news is, is that it's still a really good bridge. It just, it just has a bad deck. So we know that by redecking these, we can, we believe we can get about another 40 years of life out of this structure, which is significant. In addition to that, though, one of the things that added a little bit to the price of this, of this bridge, is that because of the accident history around the bridge, we, we couldn't go with the 3R Title 428 standards. We had to improve the guardrail and do a little bit of grading to improve the recovery area around that. And I think that that is a benefit to the citizens of, of the area, and will make this bridge safer and preserve it for years to come.
Commissioner Shore?
There's quite a bit of traffic on that road. Do you have a planned detour route and length of time?
So I believe this one is a 40-day project, and we do have a detour route. Unfortunately, the detour route is not on pavement, because we don't have a lot of pavement in that area. And so again, the goal would be to stabilize this bridge as quickly as possible and, and get it back open to the public.
Any other questions for the county engineer? Oh, Commissioner Avery, apologize.
I noticed that I-beam on the last slide you put up, it looks pretty bad to me, and you don't have any, you didn't mention any repairs to it.
Yeah, actually, we will be repairing that I-beam, and if you go back and you look at the itemized description of what we're doing, we're also going in, and we're painting all these I-beams with, with a rust-resistant epoxy paint. That, of course, did add some cost to the project, but we'll preserve the I-beams.
But the rust will reappear.
Right. Well, what they, they have a process that they sand it down and then, and then, and then repair it, and then put the epoxy paint on.
You could, you could go out and watch.
No.
We could arrange that, Commissioner.
I just have some bad experiences with rust. You can't stop it, really.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
None yet.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second to approve the contract, or to award the contract to Constructors, Inc., for redecking Bridge N138. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. L is an amendment to kind of contract C-17-78 with Schmiede and Concrete, Inc., for a price decrease on the unit price contract for pavement and concrete services.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Schmieding Concrete for a decrease on the unit price contract for pavement and concrete services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. M is an amendment to kind of contract C-16-241 with Acuity Special Products, Doing Businesses Zap, Inc. for a price change on comprehensive operational and janitorial supplies solutions.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Acuity Special Products for a price change on comprehensive operational and janitorial supplies solutions. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. N are amendments to the following contracts for weed abatement and mowing. The amendments renew the contracts from June 23rd, 2017 through June 22nd, 2018. And this includes county contract C-15-303 with Beatrice Lawn Care, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $10,000. County contract with Gary's Lawn and Landscape in an amount not to exceed $15,000. County contract C-15-305 with Lee's Lawn Maintenance in an amount not to exceed $8,000. County contract C-15-306 with Mr. Yards &amp; More LLC in an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend four county contracts for weed abatement and mowing. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4O is a City of Lincoln-Lancaster County Joint Budget Committee funding recommendations for fiscal years 2017 through 2018.
Good morning, Ms. Oil.
Good morning, Sarah with Lancaster County Human Services. And the JBC funding is funding that is drawn down from both city funds and general funds. It's put into one pot. And then, we have two members of the county board who sit on that committee to distribute funding, two members of the city council, and then, an appointee from both the county board and the mayor's office. So, funding priority areas for this specific pot of money are behavioral health, shelter, victim safety, and food. So, pretty great needs in our community. There's the funding recommendation sheet that was attached to the agenda. We discussed this at staff meeting. I do want to mention, though, that this year, we have seen a significant increase in the number of requests that have come through. And we saw that both in JBC and we also saw that in our Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund. In Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund, which I know is the next item on the agenda, but they all relate to each other. In Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund, we had over 1 million in requests. Usually, we get around 600,000 and we have 400,000 to distribute. If you remember back in January, February, that's when the state cuts started happening. And so, nonprofit entities were well aware of the fact that they're not going to be able to get any type of Title II funding, which traditionally, we got about 125,000 for our county from Title II funding through the state. We also found out then that a lot of our community aid funding was going to be cut. Community aid enhancement, for example, this year. Last year, we got 225,000. This year, we got 48,000. Also, community aid funding was not allowed to be carried over from fiscal year to fiscal year. While that's not a direct cut, it is in the sense that we traditionally carried over around 200,000 each year. So, this year, we're trying to make sure that we are able to spend all of that funding. But it's hard to know where we're at with expenditures prior to the end of the fiscal year. So, the requests have increased. The recommendations, because of the requests, the needed funds in the community, the requests have also increased. And the recommendations increased with that. The recommendations increased from the county from 770,000 to the JBC making a recommendation to increase it by 200,000. So, it'd be 970,180 dollars from JBC, from county funds.
I will move approval of the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the City of Lincoln-Lancaster County Joint Budget Committee funding recommendations. And the one question I had, and I know you mentioned the juvenile justice prevention funds. You gave the amount of requests versus funding, but you didn't for the joint budget committee. I don't know if you have that information because I think that's important to share with the public. Because while you're seeing issues on the juvenile side, you're also going to see the same issues in the JBC.
Absolutely. So, for JBC, we had almost 2 million in requests and 1.2 million available to distribute.
Commissioner Shore.
If I could just note for the record, Commissioner Brinkman is not here, but she wanted to go on record as supporting these recommendations as a member of the JBC.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4P is the City of Lincoln-Lancaster County Joint Budget Committee funding recommendations for Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund grants for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County Joint Budget Committee funding recommendations for Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund grants. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Q is acceptance of the Lancaster County Enhancement Grant, State Grant Award 17 EB 612 from Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice in the amount of $48,643.
This is the enhancement funding that is basically money left at the table from other counties that don't apply for their community aid funding. Again, community aid funding is a predetermined amount of money that each county gets based upon their juvenile population, ages 12 to 18. So, in the past, there's been a pretty significant amount of money left on the table. This year, that's where part of the governor's budget cuts came from, was this leftover money. So, that's why you saw ours go from 225 last year to 48,000 this year. All of this funding is going to our crisis stabilization initiatives and youth services.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the Lancaster County Enhancement Grant from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Commissioner Avery has a question.
Sarah, what can you do with 48,600 when you had substantially more than that previously?
So, 48,000 will fund for one licensed therapist for shelter. We were able to draw down money from the region to support the Crisis Line for Youth Crisis Services and then, to support the Crisis Mobile Team. So, what the crisis stabilization piece did was provide respite for those families that maybe just needed a one- or two-day placement for their youth. Shelter is still going to be able to do that, but we were able, last year, to fund two therapists and then, also have different emergency services in place at the shelter that we no longer will be able to have. So, yeah, we're going to see a cut. We're going to see it affect our youth in that area.
Any other discussion?
Move approval.
We already have a motion and a second. Anyone else? Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4R is a grant contract with Family Service Association in an amount of $25,000 for in-school therapeutic services through Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Family Services provides in-school therapy services for youth prior to them entering the juvenile justice system. Youth are referred to Family Services when school counselors see an increase in maybe truancies or when they know that they're struggling with an issue at home. Therapists are right, they're available in the schools. There's four high schools where these therapists will be located at. They currently are located there, Lincoln High, East, North Star, and Southwest. And then, they're in three middle schools, which are Keller Park and Lefler. And LPS also puts money into this.
Any questions for Ms. Oil?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract, excuse me, with the Family Services Association for in-school therapeutic services through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Lot of words. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. S is a grant contract with Volunteer Link in the amount of $38,165 for the Community Service Project through Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
And Volunteer Link helps our youth who are on juvenile diversion find community service in our community. So, they help youth actually get connected to those nonprofit entities. They follow through to make sure that they did actually do the community service that they were assigned to do. And then, they have them do a survey afterwards. And then, Volunteer Link also follows up with each of those nonprofit entities to see how the youth did as far as when they were there volunteering.
Any questions?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Volunteer Link for the Community Service Project through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. T is a grant contract with Youth for Christ in an amount of $6,650 for the Real Essentials Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is May 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2017.
And Matt Shulte, the Director of Youth for Christ, has joined us today.
Hello. I've lost my voice this morning, so I'm going to do my best to talk. Tried to bring someone along to talk for me, it just didn't work. We've really enjoyed partnering with the county to provide a parent life program for teen parents. This grant allows us to take that same effective curriculum and implement it in a more condensed timeframe at the Youth Services Center this summer. And it's been a great partnership so far. We're excited to see this curriculum continue to have impact on teens in Lincoln. And so, we're excited about that. I will also say, as many of you know, I do serve on the school board in town. And so many of the programs you guys have funded over the years, truancy programs, things like that, have helped us create a great graduation rate and a great experience for students across the city. So, thank you for that as well.
Are there any questions for Mr. Shulte?
No.
I say, we will spare you questions.
Well, I've got a board meeting tonight, too, so I have no idea how this is going to work out.
Well, we wish you the best. We've all been there, so.
Thank you. And thank you again for this partnership with this program.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Youth for Christ for the Real Essentials Program. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. U is a grant contract with Cedars Youth Services in an amount of $48,643 for the Youth Crisis Stabilization Program through Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
And this is the one that I was previously speaking about, where they partner with the Crisis Line and the Crisis Mobile Team and have the mental health staff.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Cedars Youth Services for the Youth Crisis Stabilization Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. V is a grant contract with Child Guidance Center in an amount of $50,000 for the school-based therapy program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
And this is a partnership, again, between Lincoln Public Schools, the region, and then, the county through Crime Commission funding to provide in-school therapy services at North Star and Northeast High School through Child Guidance.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Child Guidance Center for the school-based therapy program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. W is a grant contract with Child Guidance Center in an amount of $10,494 for the therapeutic consultation program through Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is April 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2017.
And this is to allow the in-school therapy services to provide therapy during the months of May and June, basically during summer school.
Any questions for Ms. Oil? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Child Guidance Center for the therapeutic consultation program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4X is a grant contract with Lighthouse in an amount of $5,702 for the out-of-school suspension program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is April 15th, 2017 through June 30th, 2017.
And this was run as a pilot program. LPS had asked to partner with Lighthouse to see how it would work for youth who are suspended. Instead of staying at home, to go to Lighthouse and to be involved in curriculum and evidence-based activities at Lighthouse. So, with funding that we had remaining from the last fiscal year, we piloted it during the last six weeks of school. And now, I believe the Director of Lighthouse is trying to find funding to continue it on for the next school year because it was a success.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Lighthouse for the out-of-school suspension program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Y is a grant contract amendment with Child Guidance Center to modify the source of funding for contract C-16-658 to include Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Community-Based Juvenile Services Aid State Grants, Number 15 EB 0602 and Number 16-CB-0523. The contract is for the juvenile diversion program. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
And Child Guidance provides assessments for our youth on diversion. Occasionally, the county attorney will request that a youth have an evaluation and Child Guidance at that time does that. This is simply an amendment to clean up the funding. We had that funding that was, suddenly, we realized within a two-week timeframe that we weren't going to be able to expend it past the state. So, we moved funding around. This is the result of that.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract amendment with the Child Guidance Center to modify the source of funding. We have a question from Commissioner Shore.
A question, just a comment. When you look at all these grant contracts, I know they're just a small fraction of the total grants that you and Jenny and, oh, Grant's manager, draw on a blank. Rhonda, thank you, oversee. And that's why you run around with three binders and a total of maybe eight inches of paper with you all the time. So, thanks to the team.
Yeah, and I would also add that our team has grown this year. And so, now, we also have Dave at the county attorney's office as part of our team. We also have the clerk's office, Kelly and Allison getting everything in trim, and then, Sue Eckley with risk management and the new insurance. Sue Eckley with risk management and the new insurance requirements have all, it's been a pretty phenomenal team.
Okay.
But thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Avery has a question or comment, and so does Commissioner Amundson.
I just said, what you have done is you've been very efficient in pulling key people together to help you. And you know, it's always a mark of leadership when you recognize the people who do assist you.
Right. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is Number 5, Consent Items Received and Placed on File the Following Reports for May. This is for Assessor Registered Deeds and Records and Information Management. Setting a public hearing on Tuesday, June 27, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding the proposed sale of property generally located at 222 South 11th Street in the City of Lincoln-Lancaster County, Nebraska, which includes determining, or, excuse me, declaring that the property is, no longer serves the county purpose, determining fair market value, and setting the date for the sale of the property.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number 6 is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none of the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience here for public comment? Seeing none, please continue with the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including department budget hearings, on Thursday, June 15, 2017 at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will meet on Friday, June 16, 2017 at 1:00 p.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building to discuss the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 20, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video on Demand or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. Next, I'll go ahead and start the meeting for the Lancaster County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. In attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda Item 1 are minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 6, 2017.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 6. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number 2 are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is Number 3, a public hearing. This is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, and this includes Cathedral of the Risen Christ, Community Blood Bank of the LCMS, Family Services Association of Lincoln, First Slavic Baptist Church, First United Methodist Church, Lincoln and Lancaster County Child Guidance Center, Lincoln Cats Youth Group, Nebraska Community Blood Bank, New Bethel Bible Way Apostolic Temple Church, and Wauga Cemetery.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone in the audience to testify in support of these applications, in opposition or in a neutral capacity? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Next is Number 4, and this is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval?